Time is six o'clock. I call meeting of the Toca City Council to order. Ask everyone to rise as we do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Face the flag, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You read that with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. We thank you, God, for being able to live in this free country, God, and God that we are, God, that we are in these positions, that, God, you would use us to do the best for our citizens, for our county, our state. God, I just pray that you give us wisdom as we go through this meeting, and just thank you for the blessings you give us, and I pray, God, that we would never take those things for granted. Pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Welcome there, everyone. Appreciate everyone being here this evening at this time. With the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Cheryl.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Poe. Mayor Caffey.
Here.
This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none will move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fifth, 2024.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee, yes. Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager report. Good evening, Mr. Delay. How are you, sir?
Good evening. I'm doing great. I hope everyone else is doing well. My report is on attachment number two if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I started reading that, and that sounded like, well, where's Danny going when Harry got to the end? And I says, thank you all.
Oh, sorry.
A little panic mode?
Yeah, a little bit. I went to the end and said, thank you, thank you. I recommend approving.
Wanted to thank everybody for support.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
All right, I have motion second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the city of Atoka for the month of July of 2024.
Those are on attachment number three if anyone has any questions.
That's a bunch of them.
Yeah, they had a bunch this time.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting ordinance number six oh seven, amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the city manager for the city of Atoka.
That is attachment number four. That is where y'all approve me to change my percentage that I put in retirement.
Okay. Do we need to change that to today, or is it effective August fifteenth, or is it the nineteenth today?
Johnny?
I was just actually looking at that. Technically, it would not be effective until thirty days after its passage.
Till today. After.
So, just by virtue of being in ordinance, I think that should say, well, number one, it's not spelled right, but I think it should be probably September, whatever that Wednesday would be, after its publication for thirty days.
Good.
So, I recommend approving with whatever the thirty days is, effective the thirty days of today, Johnny, or?
It'd be next Wednesday, thirty days from next Wednesday, because that's when it would be published.
And I'll second that.
The motion is second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number five, discussion and/or action to declare ordinance one six oh seven an emergency.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, supporting the nomination of city manager Danny Delay to serve as District Four appointee on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League.
That is on attachment number five. I'm finishing out the term of the previous person that was on that board, and it's open for reelection, and they've nominated me again from the nominating committee, but I'll go before the whole committee at the OML conference next month.
Okay.
Do you have an opponent?
I do not know.
I recommend approving.
I thought you were gonna say something else.
I did, too.
We need to start campaigning.
I will second.
Okay, I have motion second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee, yes. Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes, definitely yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion and/or action regarding designating Gene Dotson as assistant city manager.
Hello, chief.
Hi, chief.
This is something I've briefly discussed with some of you over the last period of time. I'd like to have Gene in that role on a part-time basis to help me cover things, especially if I'm away from the city or something like that. He could come into that role and work with me on some projects around here and gradually get more acquainted with the ins and outs of every day, you know, running the city.
Is Gene coming out of uniform?
No, no, it would just be, the city manager part would just be a part-time basis.
Okay.
He would be police chief slash assistant city manager, you know, part-time.
Money's there?
Yeah, and I would take care of that.
Okay.
And that gives him the ability to sign things that need to be signed immediately if there's an issue and you're out of pocket where you can't sign them?
Yes. Yes, in fact, we need to get on the next agenda for him to be put on the check signing and that stuff.
I don't know about that. Hey, I have a complaint when we're done, so you take those two.
Yeah, he's getting any you have tonight, go ahead.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure he's used to that. I'm real, I'm like, Gene. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Poe is absent. Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes, absolutely yes. All right, number eight, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the scheduled meeting dates for the year 2024. Should that be 2025?
Yes. I'm sorry about that.
All right, strike that, amend that to 2025 for the municipal court docket.
What attachment I missed out?
That is attachment number six.
We're approving this a little bit earlier, earlier than normal, because when we issue a citation to someone, it automatically generates their initial appearance date, and they do those, I believe, two months out, so we need these approved prior to December so that we can get those put in our system, because all the tickets they start writing in October will be in January, so.
I recommend approving for, y'all said twenty, twenty twenty-five, yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, have motion second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes. Item number nine, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the purchase of sixteen Axon Taser ten tasers in the amount of seventy-three thousand, two hundred, forty-two dollars and forty cents for the police department.
These are items that... I didn't know if y'all wanted to talk to anybody about it.
These are items we looked at at the last meeting, correct?
Yes, it's the final close and the addition of the cameras that we talked about, so.
Did anything change? I recommend approving.
I would just note that the amount that we are actually approving tonight is going to be fourteen thousand, six forty-eight, forty-eight.
Fourteen thousand, six forty-eight, thirty-eight?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Per year.
The way they do this, you know, the total is seventy-three thousand, but we pay that over five years, and they don't do an installment contract, which is great, because we can't do that. They're just taking us on our word that every year we're going to approve a payment of fourteen thousand dollars to them, so.
Well, we approved the contract, right?
There is no contract. We're just, we're just going to pay them fourteen thousand dollars over the next five years, and if we don't, they're gonna come back and get them and turn it off, so.
You can't trust the police department.
What was the total?
Isn't that correct, chief?
Yes, yes, that is correct. It's just a five-year, no interest, and no formal...
Do we own them?
Yes, yes, the end of it, yes. They're under warranty through that, yeah, once they're paid off, and then you have programs where you can upgrade if your equipment's getting old or you need to replace it, but, yeah, they structured, they've been really good to work with, and so.
With additional costs, I'm sure, when you have an upgrade or something.
Well, and, yeah, there would be at the end of the cycle, if you have issues or they upgrade the equipment or have some issue during the course of it, then they cover that, but, yeah, like I say, it's five years, no interest, and basically just a signature, and kind of like Johnny said, they will, they just flip the switch if they don't want it and come get their equipment back.
What is the life of those?
The in-car cameras would be quite, the tasers themselves typically, they run a five-year serviceable or usable lives, kind of like body armor. Not that it wouldn't work past that, but it's basically all that the manufacturer will guarantee it or cover it for. Now, the in-car video, probably until there's a problem or the system would be upgraded, because they do, they do change the body cameras that the officers are wearing now as a generation two, they take a generation three out, but the twos are interfaceable with the in-car video and stuff, so all that technology merges. And there's, to my knowledge, there's not really a serviceable life on the camera systems. They're...
It's more of a software basis that takes them out?
And it's electronics, but, I mean, they're, they stay in business, and they take a beating on, not the in-car as much as the body cameras.
Body cameras, the tasers, those all...
The mounts and stuff, they get knocked off in scuffles and stuff like that, so they're, they're pretty tough. They've already been through...
Same thing, tasers in and out of the vehicles, all that, they take a lot of wear.
Yeah, and we've had those damaged on occasion, because the guys have to wear them on their non-gun side by policy, so that puts on the left side of most officers, so there is a hang-up issue in and out of the car a lot of the time. We have had issues where they're damaged, but Axon has either repaired or replaced them, so.
So, Johnny, the wording on this should be forty-eight thousand, six forty-eight, forty-eight a year over a five-year period totaling?
You're just gonna approve a payment of fourteen thousand, six forty-eight, forty-eight.
So, I recommend approving fourteen thousand, six forty-eight dash dot thirty-eight.
Dash forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forty-eight cents.
Forty-eight.
Okay, have motion on the floor, and a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes. Okay, before we get to item ten, what's the annual total on that?
That's the breakdown, twenty-six oh twenty-six eight.
Twenty-six thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Then it goes to sixteen cents, the final four years, Johnny, so we save two cents.
Twenty-six thousand, oh, twenty-six, what?
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand.
Oh, twenty-six.
Twenty-six dollars.
Yeah.
In eighteen cents. Okay, so item number ten, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the purchase of eleven Axon in-car video systems in the amount of twenty-six thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighteen cents for the Atoka Police Department.
So, you're, you, you said that you're making that as a motion, or?
I'm reading, I'm reading the item.
Oh, okay, I recommend approving.
And I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes. All right, thank you, Gene, appreciate you.
Eleven, item eleven, discussion and/or action to award Miller asphalt the overlay job of Twelfth Street from Montana Avenue to Oklahoma Street, including labor and materials of two-inch hot mix asphalt in the amount of twenty-six thousand, eight fifty.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the collections contract between the city of Atoka and, help me with this name.
Aberdeen.
Aberdeen Enterprises Two, Inc., proclations of past due traffic fines.
Gene, you're me.
Johnny, you wanna, you wanna do that one?
I can. I was gonna bump it to the assistant city manager. Aberdeen is a collections company that many municipalities use and district courts use to collect past due traffic fines. They approached me at a conference about a year ago, and I just, I don't know, it just seemed like our processes at that time were fine, but they're really not fine. We have a lot of past due tickets that we could use help collecting on, and so they are going to charge a thirty-five percent collection fee, but that fee, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance where we're gonna add that fee to the cost of the traffic fine, so the city's not going to be out any money, so if they collect it, they're going to collect their collection fee as well. Most of the cities around here that, you know, use them are very happy with the services that they provide. There's not gonna be any out-of-pocket cost to the city, so there's really not anything for us to lose. If we increase the number of collections that we make, it's only going to be a net benefit for the city. If someone doesn't get sent to collection, they won't pay the thirty-five percent, and Aberdeen won't get anything, so if someone comes in, pleads guilty, pays that day, it's not gonna be an issue. We're gonna get the full fine due to us. They're not going to get a collection fee because they didn't do anything.
Just simply on the past due items.
So, it's the only, only past due items that we refer to them. We can recall anything for any reason if we need to, so if we refer something to them and then realize it was a mistake, or they come in and work out a deal with me, I can recall it at any time, and we don't owe them anything. It's a one-year contract that will automatically renew for successive one-year periods over three years. We can terminate it, you know, obviously, it's a one-year contract. We can terminate it at any time if the expiration of the one year, so.
What are, how do we collect now?
Who would be responsible for collecting?
We, if they don't pay, they, okay.
Right now, we have no collection efforts. It's a matter of we suspend your license and hope at some point you wanna get your license back and pay your fine.
So, it doesn't cost us anything, so, right, because we're gonna add the fee?
Correct, yeah.
So, that's, it's, so the penalty for not paying now is suspension of licenses, no warrants or anything issued?
If you have a license.
Yeah, we do.
Many people don't, and so we have no recourse in that case.
We do issue a warrant, failure to pay warrant, but with the changes in the state law, you really can't be arrested for a failure to pay warrant at this point, and even if you were arrested for it, no one's going to transport, they're not gonna hold you on a failure to pay warrant anywhere, so the warrant's really not a big deal, and with this, they use, and I think the big draw on this is they will use taxpayer or tax intercepts, so if they are due a federal or state income tax refund, Aberdeen will be able to get ahold of that to satisfy the past due amount, whereas right now, we're not currently doing that, so.
So, who, what employee would be responsible for overseeing this?
Well, the court clerk will basically on a weekly basis, or however she decides to do it, but they recommend a weekly basis, just send them a spreadsheet of all of our past due citations.
To like Gene then, or?
No, to Aberdeen.
Oh, okay.
And Aberdeen will start a file. I mean, we have names, we have date of birth, we have addresses for all of them, driver's license numbers if they have one, so.
Just so everybody's aware, court clerks office out of the PD, correct?
Correct, yeah. Veronica and Fern, yeah. So, they will come down, Aberdeen will come down and kind of onboard them. They have a online portal that they can use to upload this information. There's many different ways that they'll accept it, so they'll kind of work with them to figure out the best way to submit the past due accounts and set them up for processes to do that, but I don't imagine, I mean, there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve for them in doing this, but I don't, I don't foresee that it's going to be, and Gene can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't foresee that it's gonna be anything that's a burden on them. It should be pretty quick and simple to be able to pull a report and email it over to them, so.
Okay. You have anything, Gene, that you?
No, I think in the long run, it would actually benefit them as opposed to having to track this stuff and just keep it open indefinitely, and if someone does eventually pay, and they have to track that process back, and like Johnny indicated, the failure to pay warrants and stuff now, they've just overly complicated the entire system, and this company, the city manager and I met with their rep last week and went over some stuff and get them, they addressed a lot of the statutory issues, and I figure they, they seem to be very flexible.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Caffey.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the ordinance number six oh eight, providing a collection... providing a collection fee of thirty-five percent of the amount of the unpaid fine or cost if con, or cost of contract with court cost compliance liaison for collections thereof.
So this is what you were talking about?
Yes. So this is an ordinance that says if we send something to the court cost compliance liaison, that's their new title under the new statute that was passed last year that changed it all. They're no longer a collection company, they're court cost compliance liaisons. If we refer something to them, your fine now goes up by thirty-five percent. This is just codifying that thirty-five percent in our code, giving us the authority to add that to it.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Uh, one thing, in our notices in their fines, do we have to give any kind of notice that if they don't pay on time that there would be an additional?
No, this was actually passed by state law last year, allowing us to do this.
Okay.
And there's, there's no notice requirements in that, so.
All right. Have a motion, a second on the floor, rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Item fourteen, discussion and or action to declare ordinance number six oh eight an emergency.
I recommend approving.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes. Is there any council comments?
I just have one comment for, so I don't forget it. On the, we haven't seen anything from the, since Phyllis Bates left with, from properties that we're working on. Could we get a report on those?
We just had our first hearing, what's that been, two weeks ago, John?
You'll see it on next month's agenda.
There should be, there should be some people on our, our next agenda.
Okay, I just knew it'd been a while since we've seen it.
Yeah, we, we've got a new hearing office right now.
And I have one, what about fall clean up? Do we wanna talk about that now or next?
Susan and I were just talking about that earlier, we, we didn't think to put it down on here.
We can't talk about it now, but we can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, I know, I'm terrible, aren't I? You can make comments, you can't discuss.
So what says, call me up, not discussion?
Yes.
All right. All right, any other comments? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Kathy?
Yes. All right, next meeting of the evening is the Etoka Municipal Authority, which call roll, please.
Ms. Poe? Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Chairman Kathy?
Here.
All right, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the payment of the purchase orders for the Etoka Municipal Authority for the month of July, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. All right, we're gonna switch the order around, we're gonna go to the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority next. Clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Chairman Kathy?
Here.
This is public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Oh, yep. Losing my mind. Yes, that's correct. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report. Good evening, Carol.
Hi, Carol. So the guys are working hard and we've got a tournament next week. And Destry has extended the registration for the flag football. We have a few in it, but we wanna make sure everybody knows that there's the opportunity for that for the little kids. It's eight and under. They do have to be three on January first, twenty twenty-four to be able to play. And it should be.
You say three?
Yeah, they're little. Little guys.
Wow.
There are, there are three-year-olds, there are kids that are two that would love to play, but we're requiring them that they need to at least be three.
They don't know that they want to play, but their parents probably don't want them to play.
We're all, we're all excited about that one. And then.
That'll be worth the price of admission right there, I'm just gonna tell you.
This is the first time we've tried something like this and it's, we've got the full support of the, the Little League Football Team that's here. And so I think it'll be a lot of fun.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I do too.
Well, you know, if it doesn't work, you know, Durant does a, a fall week of like T-ball and stuff, so.
All I gotta say, somebody better film that and makes money off that video.
We tried doing baseball last year.
T-ball?
T, yeah, but the problem was is there's just so many conflicts. And it was just, it was tough.
Probably have older, older brothers and sisters playing in, in school sports, and that started.
We just, we've never been able to really get a good fall baseball league, so, or baseball and softball league. The other thing that we're all working very hard on are complex projects and upgrades at the complex and how we're scheduling them out this winter. And then we will come with a full packet and request approval for some expenditures probably next month.
Fields look really good.
They are, right now, they're trying everything to keep that grass alive.
Yep.
And I do want to remind everybody that the sports complex grass is not irrigated with city water. It's irrigated with water from, from Etoka City Lake. So there's never any issues. I mean, when we had the, the requested don't water thing, while it built up pressure, the sports complex had no bearing on any of that.
Okay, what about the splash pad, how long is it gonna stay open?
We are hoping to keep it open at, at least through the tournament, September twenty-first. But National Night Out are after, it's October fifth, from one to four, out there at the sports complex. So we're hoping to, it'll be nice enough weather that we can keep it open all the way through that and then close it right after that.
But at least through September twenty-first.
We're gonna keep it open as long as we can, depending on the weather.
Okay.
As warm as it was last year, I don't think that'd be a problem.
I think we're gonna be okay.
Does it mess up your guys' uniforms if they go get the splash pad, Jean, with their uniforms on?
Well, I told them the first time to push it to October like Texas and Arizona does. Because we did it in August.
Yeah, yeah.
It was brutal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pushed it to October last year to try it and it wasn't much better.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, Randall Slosson is the police officer that's, we're heading the National Night Out.
He does a good job.
And that will be out there.
Very good.
Thank you, Carol, I recommend approving.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of July, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Any trustee comments?
Was, was it at the sports complex last year? I didn't go to it last year.
Yes.
Last year, the first one was at the school. The one last year was at the sports complex.
With the city lake and the upgrades there, that'll be a fun night, the weather's good.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it worked really well, great turnout. You have a great opportunity for citizens to come out and meet all the police officers, check out the drones that they have and just a good interface with the public and the police department. Police department did a great job.
Is it the fifth or the fourth?
Fifth, Saturday, October fifth.
Okay.
One to four.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. So move into the next meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Airport Authority Trust, which call roll, please.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Chairman Kathy?
Here. Again, this is public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
A motion, a second, rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Any trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, a second, rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. All right, as we move into the next meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority, which call roll, please.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Chairman Kathy?
Here. Okay, this is the public comment time, again, this is anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, excuse me, do we not have a representative to come and like for this? I mean, like, none of the trustees, they don't.
No, we give a report though.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
When she was asking, like, with the other golf, with golf course?
Of the others.
Do we not have someone to give a report? I could have, I guess we'd have the superintendent come and give a report at the council meeting, just stay over.
Yeah, on the nights that we have golf authority, we could do that.
Okay, we can do it.
Because I, I really don't know much about it, so I'd really like to.
Okay. All right.
Now, you did get the, the packet, correct?
Yeah.
You got the golf authority in your packet this, okay, good.
Did we, did we roll call?
Make a motion.
Okay. On item number two, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Carol?
Did we do?
She, she was, she was asking about another meeting. We are in the, you come forward.
Yep.
We've been in your meeting, we just had a sidebar for a minute.
Sorry about that. I thought we were still on the other meeting. You guys are getting too efficient.
Sorry, we own this one.
Okay. Are we on number three, my?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I attended the Business Retention and Expansion Training and I am now, again, you have that certification last three years. So I'm recertified as a Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator. I also attended an Economic Development Conference. And I love it when one of the teams, because on these last two, we've gotten together as teams and presented stuff. And one team unofficially named their team Beat Carol, and that just really made me feel good. But the other things that are going on, we're hosting a mini summit with workforce that will be September eleventh or twelfth. And it's with our industry partners and our educators, mainly like KTC, on working together on fixing some of the workforce issues and how they can work together along with the apprenticeship programs. So we're looking forward to that.
So is that like business owners, is that?
mainly manufacturers. So our local manufacturers would be the ones that would need to attend. This is to find out what are your issues, what are their issues, what issues can they be corrected to try to get this workforce to a next level.
Well, I think anybody in the service industry too is, you know, if you're trying to figure out the workforce challenges, I think aside from the manufacturing, if you could have some input from some of the service industry folks here in town, I think would be good to figure out how.
This is, this is mainly, this really is geared towards manufacturing positions.
I understand, I'm just saying the challenges throughout the whole city.
Oh, exactly.
Are those.
Yeah. Tourism is doing the Christmas parade this year, so Visit Etoka will be hosting, managing and putting on the Christmas parade. We are wanting to do a Christmas mart, the day of the parade in the green space to kind of expand upon that. And we'll be getting some additional decorations to decorate up the green space.
So would a Christmas mart, you said?
Yeah, would, in New York, they call it Kindle, a Kinder Mart, but, or Chris, Kindle Mart? But it's basically a Christmas market where artisans can come in and sell stuff. And things like that. So we're gonna be doing that and that will be the, we're gonna keep the same date, the first Saturday in December. Anybody have questions?
Okay, hearing none, do I hear a mo, hear a motion?
I'll recommend approving.
I'll second.
A motion, a second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting payment and purchase orders for the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of July twenty twenty-four.
I re, I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
All right, item five, executive session, Johnny on this, when I read both, do we need to approve going into executive session, both of them separately, correct?
Yes, correct.
I'm gonna read through both, and then we'll go back and see if we go through each one individually. Okay, item number one, executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute, section three oh seven B one, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee, namely an annual review of the performance of the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority Director, Carol Urban. And item two, on our executive session, an executive session is authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute, three oh seven B four, for the confidential communication between a counsel and its attorney concerning possible default on a lease agreement recorded in book nine thirty-one at page three seventy-four of the Otoka County Land Records, and potential efforts and/or litigation to acquire, retain possession of a property located in the Heavy Industrial Park, section one township two south range eleven east Otoka County, Oklahoma. On item one of the executive session, do I hear a motion to go into that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion is second, roll call please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
On item two, do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make the motion for item two also.
I'll second.
Have a motion is second, roll call please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Cathy?
Yes.
All right, we're in the executive session.
All right. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter into open session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. Roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes. All right. Item one, in return from executive session, acknowledgements of minutes for an executive session. Minutes were taken. Item number two, discussion and possible action on annual review and performance of the Etoka Industrial Facilities Development Director Authority... Let me try that one more time. It's been a long day. Performance of Etoka City Industrial Development Authority Director Carol Ervin to include employment status, salary, and/or benefits. At this time...
We're going to table.
We're going to table this item until the next meeting. Thank you. And is, at this time, is there any trustee comments?
I'll second.
There it is. That was... Roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Chairman Caffey?
Yes. Thank you all. We are adjourned for the...